This conference will now be recorded.
We also pray at this time a special blessing for our brothers and sisters in California, who have gone through such terrible, desperate times. We ask that they be buoyed up, feel the love, feel our concern and love for them, and all those that stand in need of a blessing. All of these things we ask in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to welcome everyone to the first meeting of the new year. I know we ended up 2024 in a little bit of a trying fashion, but hopefully things will be better this year. If I could ask everyone to make sure that your electronics are silenced at this time, appreciate that, too. At the beginning of the meeting, we have a place for citizen's comments. Citizens can make comments on things that are not particularly on the agenda at this time. You have three minutes to make your comments, and when you come forward, you need to state your name and address for the record. So I'm going to ask the city clerk if we have anybody signed up for citizen's comments today.
Yes, I have Lady Teresa Denikola Toms signed up.
Okay. If you can come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. And again, you have three minutes for your comments.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for your time this evening. My name is Lady Teresa Denikola Toms. My address is 37955 12th Avenue in Zephyr Hills, 33542. Oh, there you go. Can you hear me now? On December 12th, myself along with 18 other friendly mobile home park residents were hit with an eviction notice if we did not repair our homes immediately right after Milton. Knowing most that are on fixed incomes awaiting approval of funds and repairs from FEMA or some other charity organization, most of the items listed on those eviction forms that we received did not even apply to our particular home. On December 29th, Ms. Conklin doubled down, sending an email requiring all of us to sign a new lease and give her copies of titles to our mobile homes. After receiving everyone's rent for January totaling more than $800 in fees never before charged, January 3rd, she sent out a lease stating the rent as $775 when the base rent is supposed to be $750, plus hundreds of dollars in application fees, background and credit check fees when we've lived in our homes for years, along with what could total into the thousands for repairs and maintenance that are supposed to be the responsibility owner. Not only is the lease predatory in language and form, we were also asked to sign a separate document stating that we had received and read the lease in its entirety when she purposely left off several key documents that made up the lease. Upon requesting a complete printed copy of the entire lease to be mailed to each of us, we were told to read and sign it through e-sign. The documents were purposely sent that way. Only after we have signed it, then can we print out a complete document, but it will not print until you've signed it. Most of the residents in our park don't even own a computer or a cellphone that is even capable of opening it, let alone reading and signing it. Then we find out that not only is the home still left for sale on the lot, that they're only asking $499 a month for the rent for that particular mobile home. Yet we are asked to sign a lease for $775 with no name as to who we're entering into the agreement with, address, phone number, or contact information. Island Communities owns 11 parks in Zephyr Hills alone, all of them 55 and older. The homes for sale are listed for rent at $499 for every single one of them. Ms. Conklin is selling the homes in our park with no titles, no VIN or registration numbers on the sales contracts, and using unlicensed realtors, most who have had their license revoked, including Ms. Conklin. We are imploring the city council to enact an ordinance making it unlawful to evict someone from a home they own while they're waiting for approval of funds and to help from the government or charity to repair or maintain their home, especially after a disaster. Secondly, we are asking the city commissioner, for you guys to petition the county commissioner as well as the attorney general to launch a full investigation into the Island Communities' fraudulent and predatory lease and sales practices that they have engaged in, possibly putting thousands of seniors out on the street with no place to go after they have lived in their homes for years and have never missed a rent payment.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. I believe there is some state laws on evictions and things. Our city attorney's not here for the...
Yeah, where's the city attorney? I looked into this a little bit. I talked with the manager via email. The Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulations regulates leasing and evictions and for mobile homes.
And I have filed a complaint with them.
Okay, because I don't believe we have the authority to do a... Here's our city attorney. To pass an ordinance that would restrict this. I think that's out of our realm of authority. I did explain to the person I talked to about some of the problem I didn't know about really the evictions, and they said you should call them.
Yeah, I have packets for all of you guys to read as to what they've done here.
And I have... I printed the form. I think the city manager printed the form, too, for you to file a complaint.
Yes, I received that from a detective today.
Okay.
Because here's the other situation is that everything they give us is an address that belongs to one of the residents. All the licenses that they have, the right to do business that they have, is all under bogus addresses. When I tried to answer my eviction notice with a response, she gave me a bogus email address. So something has got to be done to investigate these people because there is fraud here. And I think the deeper you dig, the more you're going to find that this could end up being something that goes on a national level.
Well, and thank you for doing that, Councilman Spina. And I think that's where the first step would be through DPPR. I don't know if the city manager has kind of briefed the city attorney as far as eviction laws and things like that would be something at the... Would be addressed at the state level, which is the DPPR. Am I right in that?
Yeah, I got a little bit of information. I apologize that I was running a few minutes behind, but I think, you know, I'm happy to get your information and we can set a time to talk about this, but I need a lot more information before I can make a recommendation to council on whether we can move forward with some kind of, you know, rent control issue. There's a lot of issues that come up off the top of my head just hearing it with regards to property rights and what we have the ability to do. I know, you know, it sounded like it was a park, so I don't know if it's a 720 park or...
Some of it falls under 723, some of it falls under 475.
All right, so there's a lot of different moving parts.
Because I looked up the statutes.
Yeah, so there's different statutes for different types of parks and what can and can't be done in them. And based on the size of the park, I assume it's more than 10 units?
Yeah, we're about 15.
How many?
15.
Oh, so not... Okay, so, yeah, I just... I'll have to get some more information. So if you want to, on your way out, stop and let me get your contact information.
Okay.
Can I... The attorney? Because you... Earlier, you had said that there was damage due to the hurricane, and they had...
Yes.
And of course, everybody understands that you need an adequate amount of time to fix those damages. But it sounds like they're being a little unreasonable in their demands on y'all to repair your units. And I mean, how does that work, Matt? That... I mean, I would think there would be leeway given. I mean, they could probably try and enforce the current stated times, but if it goes before a judge, wouldn't he say, "Look, we just went through a disaster"? I mean, or is there something we could do?
Yeah, I mean, I think it gets back to... I need to look and see if the park has a prospectus and is it... You rent the lot?
See, they asked us to enter into a lease that was supposed to include a park prospectus along with the rules and regulations. That lease was 16 pages. I was able to open it and read it, but I couldn't print it to get legal advice. And upon reading it, the prospectus and the rules and regulations are missing. One of the gentlemen that did sign it didn't know what he was signing because he couldn't... And we have asked time and time again that an actual physical document be sent to each of us so that we can read it and sign it, and they are continually to refuse to do it.
So there's not... Is there a prospectus in place now?
There is no prospectus in place now because none of us are going to sign a lease we can't read first.
Or I meant prior to them taking it?
Well, yeah, we did have our rules and regulations that were grandfathered in from the original owner. The original owner passed away about three years ago. And when he passed away, we received... The first thing we received was just a slip of paper telling us how to pay the rent from now on, that we have new owners, and from now on, we can't mail our checks anywhere. We can't mail a money order anywhere. We have to pay it online, or we have to go to Amscott. That was the first time we were notified in 2021, I believe, that we had new owners.
Are the units owned by the residents or...
Yes, the houses are owned by the residents.
All of them?
Yes.
And they rent the lots?
Huh? And we rent the lot, yes.
Yeah, it's still... I don't want to speculate on what a judge would do with this, but I think there's probably some leeway under the statutes and the case law because it was such a long time that there was a state of emergency declared both locally and at the state level that I think that we could... You know, if we needed to get involved, we probably could from that standpoint, but I think a court would probably extend some time. I just can't say for sure without looking at if there's a document they're trying to enforce, whether it's a prospectus or a prior lease that you're under.
What I believe they're trying to do is to force us out of our homes so that they can resell them. Because when you get up online and you look at the houses that Island Communities has for sale, you'll see almost entire city streets where you've got five or six houses right there on the same street in the mobile home park that are used.
How old are the houses?
Mine was built in '77. They bought... They just put a brand new one in there. Most of our homes have been there forever. We've had people that have lived in that park for 30-plus years.
So they probably aren't... You're not able to move them?
No, mine is actually... I have a room addition added on, and mine's actually concreted in. It's one big house now. It's nothing mobile about it.
Right, but even if it wasn't for that, just the age alone is not permitted under Florida law to move them, you know, to build. I think it's changed recently, but I think before 1980.
And the proof of that is when you get on and look at what they're doing, every single home that they have listed for sale, instead of the $775 and all these outrageous fees they're charging us that we're going to be responsible for now, examples of like trimming the trees, they're going to charge us $500 per mobile home plus $50 per man per day just to trim the trees. To fix the fence, that's their responsibility, is a second light item with those same issues. Or to fix drainage, anytime they have to fix something, we're going to be assessed $500 plus $50 per man. And these are all stuff that belong to the homeowner, to the owner of the land, not us.
Right.
But yet, when you look at what they're advertising, they're saying $499 a month for the lot rent.
So what I... The reason I ask all those questions is because if they can't be moved, if there's a prospectus, if there's, you know, more than 10 units, every one of those things changed which laws apply to your part in your home. And the rules changed quite a bit from, you know, statute section to statute section. They could all look like a mobile home park, but they could be operating very, very differently under the law. So I still, I don't want to give you a concrete answer tonight. Let's get together this week.
Yeah, because we've got some... The people that have bought in here since she's been the property manager do not have title to their homes. Some of them bought two years ago, and they still don't have the title to their homes. Some of them, they're nickel and diming because of attorney's fees, trying to get clear title. And when you ask the ones that did sign a lease with her, when they ask for their copy of the lease, she is refusing to even give them a copy of the lease they signed.
Matt, so your recommendation for us is to get the information, and I mean, did you hear... Well, I don't know if you were here when Councilman Spina had some kind of something from the DPPR that... Did you have a copy of that for him?
I missed that.
Yeah, I have.
We are petitioning as a homeowner. We did file it...
Well, I think we need...
Committee, and we are petitioning the DPPR.
And I think that's going to be...
To issue an arbitrator in which to negotiate this lease to something that is a lot more reasonable and less predatory.
Right, ma'am. So I think that's your first step, and then if you can get with our city attorney before you leave and give him some information, and maybe he can give you like what the next step would be or something.
Yeah.
Because at this point, there's not...
I want to get all the information and assess what the city has the ability or what would be appropriate for the city government to be involved in. But you know, definitely I can, you know, get you some names of council that handle this type of stuff on behalf of the homeowners. It may be more of a private issue than a city issue, but I don't want to say...
It is not just friendly. It's happening in every single mobile home park they own.
I don't want to say for sure that there's nothing the city can do. I want to look into it. So let's get all the information. You know, like I said, whether it's, you know, 723 or not, whether there's a prospectus or not, there's a lot of different things that change what the landlords or the owners can and can't do with the parks.
Possible to do that before the next meeting, kind of have an update?
Yeah, we... I think we should do it this week.
Because I know time is critical to every one of y'all.
And Councilman Spina, a question?
Question about the storm damage. Did you have a lot of storm damage?
My entire... I had an enclosed patio that was framed in. My entire patio and the roof to the patio was completely torn apart. It was completely torn off and laying in the street. The damage to my roof is due to the fact that for six months or more, I had begged them to trim off those dead branches before they damaged my home. Most of the damage to my roof is due to their negligence in maintaining the trees. And then on top of it, they put up a huge vinyl fence that is dangerous because you can't see around it to pull out into the street. And then they took every bit of the dirt for the entire length of the park and dumped it in my yard. So now, every time it rains, instead of the water running down into the storm sewer like it used to, it runs under my house. So when Milton hit, the water... I had over six inches of water underneath the mobile home park. It was running... The room addition sits down on the ground. I had a stream running from underneath the vinyl tile across the concrete floor, under the baseboard, and back out into the flower bed.
Was there a number of mobile homes damaged?
We had... Some of us received more significant damage than others. We had one mobile home that was totaled, and what happened is, is the FEMA bought it from the couple. And when FEMA showed up to move it, Ms. Conklin turned around and called the police on them, saying that she was in the process of an eviction, and that was her mobile home. And she hung... I think the... Your chief of police hung up on her because she started screaming and cussing, and she kept calling back to the point that the police chief sent a patrol car over there to sit there and watch the workers. I think it was more for the workers' protection than it was for Ms. Conklin.
So you have... You've had professionals look at the damage, is what I...
I have. I had the county commissioner send out a contractor because we're looking at trying to get some of the public funds that are available for the... What do they call it? It's a community improvement where they can come in and fix our homes because we're all elderly and in different phases of not being able to get up on our roofs or to do anything for ourselves.
Okay, well, I think you've taken the first step with filing that notice, so that... And then if you can get with our city attorney at some point, then give some more information.
Yeah, we are going to file asking for an arbitrator.
Okay.
And we have a petition from every member in the mobile home park asking for it.
All right, well, thank you very, very much for bringing that to our attention, and you know, you heard what the city attorney had to say, so if you can get with him from there.
Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for considering this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else signed up to speak?
I don't have anyone else who has signed up ahead of time.
Okay. Seeing nobody, then I will move on to the mayor's portion of the meeting.
Have Everly and Emily come on up? So do you have anybody else with you?
Lady.
There we go. Arbor Day, folks. We're going to do a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us... Giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our communities. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Melanie Barmonson, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, do hereby proclaim Friday, January 17th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Zephyr Hills, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, plant trees to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you. Thank you. Picture for us? Oh, there you go. There you go. Okay. That's all. That's okay. And the 17th... The 17th at 2:30 in the afternoon at Zephyr Park where the Rotary Veterans Walkway is. They're going to do a celebration that day. So we welcome all of you to... Thank you. Very nice. Thank you.
And mayor, I don't know if you want to just... We did kind of take care of the Hercules thing in the CRA meeting, so if you just wanted to reiterate when the park opening was?
Right, so I think probably everyone was in the room. We're going to do the grand opening on February 13th at 12:08... 12:00 PM, and it's going to be just a special little open... Grand opening for our new park. So exciting.
And if I may, I would just like... The mayor signed a proclamation today recognizing January 20th as Martin Luther King Day in Zephyr Hills, and I'll present it to the Martin Luther King Committee next week in Dade City.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have 14 consent agenda items tonight, so council can vote on them in their entirety, or if anybody would like to pull one for further discussion, we need to do that this time.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion to second to approve the consent agenda items, all 14. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Business items. Business item number one is signers on a checking account, so it's a resolution. I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Business item 2.1 is first reading of Resolution Number 844-25, Resolution of the City Council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Pasco County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, the city manager, and the city clerk to sign checks to make deposits and withdrawals.
Right.
Do we approve them? Second.
I have a motion to second to approve Resolution Number 844-25. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. City manager's report.
As a photo contest, an annual photo contest, and each year, we ask residents to submit photos for selection. So we pick the top three. They were then submitted to council, and we picked the first one. So here you see third place, second place, and this is first place. So this photo here was submitted to the FCCMA. So we'll send out information shortly, once we get it for everyone to vote. The community gets to vote on this, and if we win, it gets placed on the FLC. No, there you are. Thank you. The front cover of the Florida Legacy Cities... Thank you. Quarterly magazine. So next meeting on the 27th, we'll bring in the first, second, and third place photographers to present them with their awards. That's all I have.
Mural on the Chamber Building, if you haven't seen it yet. It's beautiful.
Thank you. And you were all done with your report, so I'll move on to mayor's announcements.
I don't think I have any. Thank you. I didn't write any notes, so I'm good.
City manager, do you have any announcements?
Just update on Tina and Joe's. We've been working with Joe Novak on coming current with his payments. We have all of 23 is paid. The first two quarters of 24 have been paid. We're working on getting the tax statements from August, September, October, November. December's tax statements are not due until the 20th, so we're working on getting those. And then once we get those in, we'll calculate the fees that are due or the leases or the dollar amount that's due, and we'll invoice him for that. And so he's... We're getting close to being current. I know Councilman Smith and I spoke about beginning to work on modifying that lease. There was a conversation several months ago about pulling out the carriage house, and the goal was to get everything caught up, the payments caught up. So I think we're at that point. So I'll get with the city attorney to move that forward of modifying that lease. That's all I have for this evening.
Right. The attorney?
I just want to apologize for my tardiness. I know the meeting got moved up, but I was aware of it. I just got tied up on a call. I wanted to miss Gail's part, but not any of the city council part. So I apologize for that.
Right. All right, the city council. I'll start down there at Councilman Smith.
I don't have any... But I... These people... One thing I will say is I think that the people who were here on the parks, that's a big issue, honestly. Because we... I've heard so many people talking about how their park was sold and the rates got jacked up. And I think that we probably should reach out to our state legislators and let them know. I know they know it's an issue, and because I had researched it a little bit and saw there was trying to take some action on it a couple sessions ago. So I just... I mean, these people have been in their house for 30 years, however many long, and these people come in, make a few improvements, and then all of a sudden, they jack the rates up on it. That's not right. That's just not right. So if we can do anything as a city, I think there isn't a person sitting up here that wouldn't be all for it. But I encourage us all to reach to the legislators and just keep it in their ear, too. So thank you. That's it.
If I can just add to that, just because I was doing a little bit of research as she was speaking. 1977, the state issued a, almost like a statewide ban on rate, like rate capping. So as a city, we cannot do that, but talking to Matt a little bit, mobile home parks are a different beast, so there might be something that can be done there.
Well, and I know that when they were... Danny was working with another one of our parks up on the hill, that this same thing had happened to, where they came in and just doubled their... And it's very...
doubled their, and it's very unfortunate that our mobile home parks are fair game. They're moneymakers, and people see that, and so they, these big corpses have come in, they're not owned by individuals anymore, they're all owned by big corporations. So, you know, these, these older people don't have a place to go. Where are they gonna go? So it's, it makes me sad, I visited with Lady Teresa before on this, and it's, it's a heartbreaking thing, but I think we're gonna see more and more of that, and, and so maybe we reach back out to Danny and see what did he find out on this other park that they, they went to battle with on this too, and, and...
Well, you're right, because I, I've heard of twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred dollars a month on some of those, they, they're sold as mobile homes, but we all know they're not mobile at all. I mean, they're stuck, and...
Right.
So I'm paying fourteen hundred dollars a month. Well, okay, sell it. Well, who's gonna buy it?
Who's gonna buy it?
Who's gonna buy it?
They know no one can.
So, you know, whatever happens when somebody passes away and gives it to their heirs, I don't know. But I, my guess is they just say, I'm not paying that, you can keep it, you know?
Yeah, they give it away, yeah.
It'll, it's becoming more and more an issue.
And I just, the reason, I was wondering if the building department has gone and checked on, on any of the damage. I know we had to circle around and, and look at internal damage within the city, so I didn't know if we had double-checked or if we should double-check.
Yes, we have, we've got about ninety-five houses that we've looked at so far. I'm not sure Joel's been doing that.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
But we have about ninety-five cases that we're working on. We met with FEMA Friday to go over all the paperwork that's due for them, and we're starting the process, and I'm not sure if he's got, I'm not even sure what park she was in, honestly, I don't know if it's...
Friendly. It's called Friendly, it's right on First Street.
Yeah.
Friendly Hours, code enforcement was in there, I believe, as late as today. I don't know exactly what was assessed, but code enforcement, Joel Bacon was in there today.
Thank you, Calvin.
Thank you, Calvin. Councilwoman Wilkerson?
Well, I, I agree with you, I think there's no one sitting up here that doesn't want to help these folks, and, you know, although I think the answer is probably a combination of several things, you know, the reality is, is they've been paying rent and apparently on a month-to-month lease, and so they're terribly exposed from that position. The other thing is that, like you said, there's, those, those mobile homes, they don't have any value, so, so they can't get anything for their assets, so they have to find a way out. And, you know, I think that there are groups in our community that we'd be willing to help, like Ms. Thomas says that she, you know, in her letter, she talks about how she's, you know, had surgery, and she's not physically able to do some of this stuff, but I think there might be some in the community that are, and it's only fifteen homes, so I hope that we can help in that way. And also, I'd just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I'm very pleased to be, we had recently met with the Main Street Board and our ex officio, CRA director, Ms. Hamilton. We're in the process of choosing an architect to help with the restoration of the theater, very exciting work, and so thank you all for your support in that area.
Thank you.
I as well think we should try to do everything we can for those folks. I mean, they've been living there a long time, and it's like, this company comes in and just takes advantage of them, so anything we can do, I think, would be great, and that's all I have.
I just wanted to talk, I talked about this with the city manager, and I, I wanted kind of an update on what's happening with the building department, and particularly code enforcement at this time, and I'm wondering if it might be an opportunity to combine code enforcement with the police department, and kind of look at how we...
So we have, we have a building official, or excuse me, a building inspector position that has been advertised. We had a code enforcement position that was advertised, and we had a senior, senior code inspector, that position has not been advertised yet, the senior code inspector position. They're tweaking the job description, so that should go out hopefully this week. The, they interviewed today for the code inspector, I believe, they may have made a selection and moving forward through the process, so both, sorry, let me step back. The code enforcement, the code inspector and the building inspector, both were advertised on December eighteenth. The code inspector received several applications, so they did interviews today. The, to my knowledge, as of Friday, the building inspector, we have not received any applications to this point, so we'll have to, to see what that looks like. So the goal is to, is to fill those positions.
Well, you know, I have talked to you, I, I think it might not be a bad idea to look at combining code enforcement with the police. I know that a lot of times when code enforcement goes out to a site, a police officer goes with them, so it's kind of a double, and the, the police department has, their patrols have different zones, and that would be, I think that'd be a good way of breaking down the code enforcement and having them kind of look at different zones in the city, different officers with different zones, and handle it a little differently and maybe more efficiently. So has that been brought up? I, I think this is a good time to do it, since we're kind of in a rebuilding of the build, of the building department, and then we could focus on building there, and code enforcement and some of the other duties of the police department there.
Yeah, we, we've had some conversations. You know, my concern is that not every police officer is going to be a code enforcement officer, you know, and if, if that's the goal or the direction that we go, I think there's a, there's a, some blurred lines that we're gonna step over inadvertently between code enforcement and police officer, when they're, and they're two completely different...
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about making a police officer, a code enforcement officer. I'm recommending that we make, add two code enforcement officers to the one we have, and have three, and let them work shifts with the police officers within their zones, and then they can do the code enforcement there, but the police do accompany them on different calls.
Great, they do, they do accompany them on, on different calls. You know, I think the same thing can be accomplished with police officers as they see, and that's something that we have to work on internally, is that as officers, and not just police officers, but public works employees, utilities employees, as they see a code violation, or what they perceive as a code violation, is to call that in to code enforcement and say, hey, I saw, you know, X, Y, and Z at the, you know, the one, two, three Main Street. So I think we can accomplish that, you know, the, my opinion is code enforcement deals with more of the, the code violations, the civil side, the, you know, the high grass, you know, things like that, minimum housing standards, working without permits, those types of things that are closely related to the building department and what they do. But I think we can, can, we can, we can become more efficient and effective if we...
Well, do you do that now? Do you have employees do that now? Because...
It...
It used to have, like a roundtable.
I would say, wasn't there some sort of a...
Yeah, there was a roundtable, was there?
Several years ago?
So there was, and that has kind of, that has stopped, and, and we can go into that conversation.
That was the, yeah, Citywide Intel meeting. Well, I, I do think it'd be a good idea if you looked also at, at zones for the different code enforcement officers, so they're not all over the place.
Right.
I think that's a good idea.
And I think, you know, you know, the way, the reason I bring this up is because there's so much new growth, and there's so much focus there, that there's so much redevelopment and older parts of town that we have to keep up. I think we should also start working with Pasco County and see if we can't get them to create a CRA between C. Avenue and State Road Thirty-Nine. They're building all new subdivisions down there, so there's all that growth there, and everything in the middle is falling apart, literally falling apart.
Right.
There was a house in there on Fifth Street and I don't know what, that burned down, and it stayed there for over a year, just the remains of a burnout house. So we have to partner with Pasco County, but we have to maintain the older parts of town and, and not just have all these new subdivisions around it.
I agree. I, I will say our code enforcement officers typically don't go in the, the new subdivisions, just because they have HOA.
Right, I know, they don't need to.
Right. So, sorry, one of the conversations that Calvin and I've had is, we'll have three code enforcement officers, so the, the senior code inspector kind of serves as the supervisor for, for code enforcement, and I think, you know, that position being vacated, we're able to bring in, and, and part of the reason is we're changing the job description to make them more of a working supervisor, and so, you know, we'll be able to have three, three code officers, and then conversations that we've had as well is, it's not just, I mean, it's not just code enforcement doing it, like we spoke of, but also, you know, our, our permits ebb and flow every year, right? So as, you know, the permits decrease, the, the building inspector of the, can go out and help do inspections as well, and then try to get all of our employees cross-trained, where they can go out and help, the fire inspector, which is windy, and, and everyone can kind of cross-train and, and help each other, depending on what the demands are in the community at the time.
That was what I was gonna kind of suggest, because I think back when my brother first started out, and was, back then it was Bob Yeoman's, I believe, was here, and, and they kind of did it all, they did code enforcement and, and the inspection, so I think that would be a good way of looking at it, is you get an inspector, but he's also code enforcement too, so...
Right.
Because there's gonna be times, like right now, we're in a moratorium, and, you know, I mean, I know he's still got plenty going on, but there, there'll be times when there's not that much for an inspector to do, and there'll always be times for code enforcement to have something to do.
Unfortunately, we always have code issues.
Does it, maybe we should put this as an agenda item for discussion to kind of, you can lay out, they can lay out what they envision for...
Yeah, I'd like to see some of the ideas that come, I, I really think the zones would be helpful, and I think that, you know, we definitely need three, and I think we need to emphasize certain areas, and I think we need to engage Pasco County and try to work with them to clean that up south of us, because it needs a lot of help.
Yeah, and we tried that a while ago, to get them to do a CRA.
I don't know how long it's been since we've done one of our cleanups, but don't we do those quarterly?
We do, we do them twice a year, the cleanups, April, I think we do them September, April and September of each year. Two years ago, I think it was, we did a joint cleanup with Pasco County, kind of focused on the south end of town. Pasco County code officers came in, we had a meeting anyhow, the, and we went through kind of the south end, city and county, and we did a joint cleanup at Zephyr Park in the area that you're talking about, because I agree, from the apex north to the city limits, it needs a little, a little attention, and it's not all of it's in the city, which I know everybody up here knows that.
Yeah.
Right, so I think to have the county come in and help, because it's, it's perception that it is the city limits, right? They just see Zephyr Hills and hope it's the city when it's not, so I know there's been conversations, and I don't know, you know, how publicly they are, so I'll just say that there's been conversations of some redevelopment possibilities on that southern end, kind of from the apex moving north, so I think there's changes coming, but that doesn't mean that we don't do code enforcement between now and then.
Well, and I think Pasco County...
I'd like to see it on the agenda, and then we can talk about some ideas for it.
I think Pasco County has been receptive whenever we've had them, they'll do like a sweep, but you're talking about more of an ongoing thing down there, instead of just a, whenever we sort of like request it.
Yeah, no, I think they, we need to push them to set up a CRA or do something that'll, that'll help improve that area.
Okay.
All right, thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
And I don't have anything, so we have a workshop that's scheduled for six o'clock, so I can adjourn this meeting, and we will reconvene at six, give everyone a time to run the restroom or something.
Yeah. All right. Yeah.
Go on.
This is in South Dakota.
They all got Legos, all three tables.
Where do we sit up there?
You sit up there right now.
There's one in the county.
It is.
Oh, yeah.
So, you have the power.
Okay.
Okay, I think so too.
Oh, I got to put in my, what am I putting in here?
No, you got to put your name up there.
Okay, so it's under J W.
J underscore.
All lowercase?
Yep.
At CI dot desert.
No, you just need the name.
Okay, and then just put my password.
Yeah.
Find ground for up then to.
Okay, thank you.
That's not a, that's not a tit for tat.
Yeah, yeah, you're ready.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to call the city council workshop Monday, January 13, 2025 at 6:10 PM. Can I have the roll call, please, Ricardo?
Yes. Kenneth Burgess?
Here.
Charles Proctor?
Here.
Lance Smith?
Jody Wilkinson?
Here.
Steven Spina?
Here.
Mayor Munson?
Here.
William Poe? Matthew Magger?
Okay, and then we did have the planning commission here too, correct?
Could you just read it off, Todd?
Just look at who's here and say from the planning commission who's here.
Yeah, we have the folks from the planning commission, David Armstrong, Clyde Bracknell, Beth Ann Acker, and?
Randy Stolz.
And who's over there? Who's over there?
We have a couple of planning commission members. Christina, she's doing class tonight, and a couple couldn't make it, but we have a good representation.
Thank you. And at this time, then, I'm going to turn it over to Todd.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I'll do a brief introduction. I want to thank the council members and staff for being here tonight, as well as the planning commission folks. This is a joint workshop where we're going to be talking about a small visioning exercise. I think everyone's aware that the planning department is working together with Tammy Veranna with updating the city's comprehensive plan. And we're going to be taking some further steps in larger scale visioning, but this is kind of a nice little exercise for us to get started and kind of go through a dry run and kind of go through it and probably help us with the upcoming larger visioning process that we want to do. The next slide. So, here's our workshop agenda for this evening. We're doing the introduction. We'll talk a little bit about some prior visioning that has been done. Some of that you're aware of. I won't get too much into that right now. We have a smaller area, not the entire city, but just the area north of Kosick Road up to Terabella. We'll get into that. And we got some maps that show that. And we also have some planning principles and inspirations that we want to share, educate, inform everybody on this process and the visioning that we're going through, is to help us make some visioning decisions on the area that we're referring tonight. And then we have, we want to envision the planning area's future. We're going to put you to work tonight. Everybody, city council, the planning commission, we're going to put you around three tables, and we're going to give you an exercise to do. So, you'll be putting your planning hats on tonight. And then from that, hopefully, you'll have a spokesperson at each table that can report on the visioning process that we go through tonight. And then we hope to have some consensus on how to move forward in this particular area. Okay, next slide. So, here's our area. You can see it, the northern edge of Zephyr Hills. You can see Kosick Road there is the southern boundary of the 301 corridor that we'll be visiting tonight. And it goes north up to Terabella, which is on the west side of 301 there. You can see a little bit north of Trotters. And then we are including both edges of 301 tonight. You can see those yellow highlight areas that we'll be focusing on tonight. Yes?
Go back. That mobile home park's not in the city, right?
That's correct.
And what's that little red thing? That little red square, kind of a maroon?
Red square? Oh, down at the bottom?
Right by the mobile home park.
Yeah, on the south end.
Oh, okay, all right. Wait, wait. Okay.
Very observant.
I'm sorry, okay.
We'll come back to that.
Okay, okay.
So, the next slide here, little bit of the background. I think, I won't spend a lot of time. I think everybody's aware of a conditional use zoning petition that came through. Been going through the process for a while. We took it through staff. We took it through the planning commission, and we did a planning report with the city council. The planning commission did recommend approval of the petition for the land use zoning and the conditional use. Staff had recommend denial on the conditional use. And I think y'all probably recollect the reasons that we had was a part of the conditional use criteria calls for a conditional use petition. In this instance, it was for both the use and the height. But regarding the height, we kind of look in the land development code, those conditional use criteria, talking about being consistent with the existing development trends that are in that area, where we had an issue with that based on the existing development that's out there, the height of that development. And that was the basis of the SASS recommendation. But we had quite a bit of discussions about that north 301 corridor vision. Been working with Pasco County and Dade City. Tammy and I just recently had a meeting with Pasco County. We're all updating our comprehensive plans, so that'll be one of the, under the future lane use element particularly, we'll be looking at that corridor again, get the framework language in the comprehensive plan, and we intend to codify it. But catching up to that, after we did the planning report, council recommended, suggested that we do this visioning exercise just on this particular area. Again, not the whole city, just on this northern area of the city of, from Kosick Road to Terabella on the north. Back to the prior slide. So, that's the petitions that came through. We do kind of want to have this exercise tonight where we get some input, envision that desirable development. You'll get a chance to work on the tables and on the maps, and we'll have discussions about what's out there now. A lot of this area in the city is kind of the last remaining undeveloped areas, at least some of the larger areas on both sides of 301. So, now here's an opportunity to be proactive versus reactive, and do some consensus building on what we'd like to see, what we'd like to envision out there. So, okay? Do you want to jump in? With that, I'm going to turn the PowerPoint presentation over to Tammy. Tammy?
Good evening, everyone. Tammy Veranna, Veranna Consulting, Safety Harbor, Florida. So, I'm going to jump right in, because the important part remains, is in front of us. So, this is the workshop planning area, and you'll see the city limits is in white. Those areas that are in sort of the rosy rust color, that's existing development. We have some future development that has only been entitled, so it's not built yet. That's more in the tan area. And importantly, this yellow area that we're showing are undeveloped lands that have, that are susceptible to change. There's a lot of development that's happened already to the south of the city. You can see to the east. The area that's to the west that is within this green planning area, but it's not colored in, is part of what we'll talk about in a little bit, is the countryside area. And it really is meant to somewhat say as it is, or as it's zoned. Next slide, please. So, we're going to have a recap of the visioning process that was done, and started actually in 2015. They had three community workshops without, in the community. It was a partnership between Pasco County, Zephyr Hills, and Dade City. It was funded through, it was a two-part process, both funded through the state of Florida. And the culmination of this visioning process was a transportation and land use vision. So, we'll go to the next slide, please. So, the ultimate vision statement, which was, as I said, went, it was developed with community input, and it was also presented to the city councils of both cities and the Board of County Commissioners. The vision was the US 301 corridor provides interconnected and multimodal transportation choices that are complementary to the defined character planned to maintain and enhance the built and natural environments consistent with the values of the East Pasco community. So, that was accepted in January 2016, as you can see on the report cover. It covers the area from the top of Zephyr Hills to the bottom of Dade City, and then it's essentially a quarter mile distance on either side. But we'll talk more about that. I'm jumping ahead. Okay, next slide, please. So, out of this came this vision. This is the vision illustrative plan, if you will. It included 10 character areas. Each distinct had some ideas as to what the zoning and development rules would be in that area. And you can see that towards the very left side are the ones that would fall within the city of Zephyr Hills. Next slide, please. So, from that vision plan, the next step was to do a model development code. And it's somewhat of a hybrid form-based code. You have a form-based code in your CRA area. This is kind of playing on those same types of principles. You can see the regulating plan up and down in that center graphic. So, it's that quarter mile on either side of US 301, and there's 10 different character districts. Next slide, please. So, now we're going to talk, just a little bit, we'll talk more about it a little later on. But the planning area is just some information about existing conditions. In a lot of cases, we just pulled maps off the shelf. So, some of them might be a little dated. You won't see your road network, you know, precisely, or some of your stormwater ponds that have been developed since then. But we'll point those out. And these are just some photographs of the aerial views, bird's eye views, and street views of the corridor. Next slide, please. So, here are the existing land uses. This is derived from the property appraisers' parcel data. And you can see that the area is a combination of existing present-day agricultural designation or uses, residential, retail office, and then also some vacant, non-residential and vacant residential as categorized by the property appraiser. Next slide, please. There's topography in the area. These are the rolling hills and Zephyr Hills. So, you can see that there's some high points that are, you know, just south of Terabella, then a little bit west on Terabella, it starts to go back up again. And then there's some areas that are down. So, this little, kind of little, where the circles get small is where the hills get higher. So, okay, next slide, please. So, this shows soils. Pretty much this is a well-drained area, except for those low areas where the floodplain goes through. Recharge is really important to your aquifer. That's where the water that, you know, falls from the sky ends up perking down and replenishes the aquifer, which is a really important thing in Florida these days. Next slide, please. This is the 100-year floodplain. You can see those areas that are in the slashed area are the floodplain, special flood hazard areas. There is a 1% chance of flooding in a given year, and over the course of 30 years, you could expect a 26% chance of flooding within those areas. Next slide, please. This shows wetlands. It's pretty high and dry out there. And next slide. And next slide. So this is showing the transportation facilities in the area. You have a go-Pasco route that goes up and down US 301. You have the multi-use trail that's also running along US 301. The sidewalks I did not put on, I didn't get to that, but it was down by Green Slope and I think maybe along Pretty Pond. There's a limited sidewalk in the area because it's a rural area, right? It has been a rural area. And also along with that is all those little dots that you see, that's a dead end. So the road does not connect. It's just off of the collector, it goes down the street. There's no network here. And really, and we'll talk a little bit about it later, is that network is really important for circulating, especially if you're going to have more residential in an area, you have to have pathways for people to move around. And a planned street, we can see that the Dairy Road extension there on the backside of this planning area, which is shown in green. Next slide, please. This is showing the utilities that are available. So there is infrastructure that's in the area to serve new development. I'm not certain as to what sort of extensions would need to go from here, but it looks fairly well-served to me. And we have our utilities director in the room if there's any questions regarding that. Next slide, please. This is showing zoning. So the zoning in the area, we've got R4 multifamily residential, which is that sort of hatched yellow to the top. You've got some C2 commercial zoning and some, what's the other one? Oh, PUD, Planned Unit Development. To the north, on the west side, that is actually a planned unit development that hasn't been added in, into the planning areas, you see. And then there's also those white areas that are on the west side of 301 were annexed into the city, but they still maintain the county's land use and zoning designation. So that was something that would be, would need to be done before those are developed. Next slide, please. So back to the form-based code, the model, the model development code, that is, and the character districts. And mind you, these have not been developed, they're just a model. They're something that's at the cities, all the city, Dade Cities, Zephyr Hills and Pasco County's disposal, should they want to move together to work on these codes. It's not required that you all work together, just that we thought that the brain trust could come together and develop this code. But within the city, the character districts that fall within Zephyr Hills include Zephyr Vale to the bottom right, Zephyr Moor, and then we cross the street to, because that's the city limit, across the street you see some of the countryside area that's further to the west. And then the employment center, which is, that's also included in the city employment center. But it's below our planning area, or above our planning. Okay, so next slide is, so let's talk about the two categories that have been, at that time, seen for potential development. The Zephyr Moor, which is the purple area, was intended in this vision for mixed use development with a maximum height at 55 feet, to be connected and multimodal through a network of streets and sidewalks and trails, to be sensitive to the adjacent uses and topography, and to have buffered views from the road. So with the US 301 coming in, buffered views from that angle, but then also buffered views between development and the rural countryside. And I'll make a comment regarding the maximum height. The philosophy behind this is based on the density gradient. So you would have nodes where things would be more compact and intense, but then it would level out as you go out into the countryside. So it's a density gradient. So not 55 feet everywhere, but 55 feet in the right places.
Five feet is seven? Four, yeah.
It's more like five stories, right?
Five?
Well, I mean, depends on the floor plate.
Twelve.
So that would?
Five feet on center, so that would be, like 60 feet would be five stories.
Okay.
And could be, you know?
You can shrink the floor place because it was done in my town, but it's, but you're right, on a typical, it's probably more like a 12-foot. So would you say this is more of a four-story building? Okay. And then what about the 45 feet? Is that more of a three-story then, on the other category?
Oh, 55 feet. This is recommended?
These were based on the vision and it was the model code that came out of that, but it was never adopted. So it's, what it is right now is public input. That's essentially what it is, is based on public input.
Erie, that worked great. However, we found that that sort of densification, we didn't have the infrastructure in place. So when we were approving apartment buildings that had 500 families in them, we ended up with hotspots and things that we couldn't manage.
And lots changed since we had public input and we're all aware of the apartments and the density, the water, the traffic. So, you know, we'd like to go through that process and we're doing that tonight to kind of get people's opinion updated from when we did this originally.
And that's a very good point. This model code was put together, I think it was finished in 2018. So it's a fair amount of time that's gone by.
Remember at that time, we had very few income-based housing options for people and that was one of the things, Grand Reserve, Fort Colony, Fort King Colony Apartments, those were, that was really sort of the implementation of that ideal that we would be providing affordable housing for our residents in that missing middle. It kind of got out of hand.
Yeah. So the other category that I'll speak to is the Zephyr Vale District. That's the orange area, so it's a predominant part of this planning area that we're looking at tonight, was looked at as having higher density residential with minimal office and retail, the maximum height 45 feet, also connected and multimodal relative to transportation and also sensitive to topography. Next slide. So this is the, this is the Village of Pasadena Hills overlay, which is shown on the map. But I'll draw your attention to the Village of Pasadena Hills countryside area, which is the slashed or the hatched area to the west side. I have a hard time with west and east sometimes, west side of US 301. So what we learned from Pasco County during the process of putting together this model code was that the legacy, the zoning within those areas is allowed to go forward, but increasing those or changing those to something more intense is something that the county does not want to entertain. But we are checking with staff, they are updating their comprehensive plan right now. So we'll find out if there's been any movement in that, in that policy. It does run, the whole countryside area is based on the fact that it runs along a natural ridge and that the area is largely in a closed drainage basin. So, and then also it complements the more intensive development that's happening within the interior of the villages of Pasadena Hills. And you can see our little planning area over there to the right. We have, well, I don't know if, this is, I see the red areas up there.
The, that hatched area, that's who you're talking about, right?
That's called the countryside area, the Village of Pasadena Hills.
Right. And you said that the density, whatever the density is, they can continue with that.
So they have the uses, the zoning, essentially the legacy zoning, so whatever was there, because there was a fair amount of non-rural zoning that was up and down 301. They've been there a long time. So they didn't take anything away. But they're not allowing, it's supposed to stay mostly in the countryside.
Okay.
Character. Did you have something you wanted to add? No, okay. Next slide, please. So in this model code, it looks at the idea of activity nodes. And those activity nodes would be developed or designated at a time when you knew where there was going to be more intensive development. And as I said before, it's kind of built on that density gradient. So within these quarter-mile walk sheds, if you will, that's in the pink, or the half-mile, which is, the quarter mile's a 10, a five-minute walk, the half-mile's a 10-minute walk. You would have mixed use development, civics places, plazas, parks, a lot of multimodal accessibility, so ways for people to walk and bike and take the bus and not necessarily have to drive their car everywhere. And then importantly, it would have street grids and blocks, not only to move the traffic around, so you have a lot of choices for how you get out of your house and out into the city. It would provide multiple street frontages. So all of those streets that you see are potential opportunities for the little sort of Main Street-type development, small storefronts and, you know, very walkable development. Envisioned a maximum block length of 500 feet. I believe in your downtown, you have 300 feet.
300 feet.
And then the block perimeter could be no more than 1,600 feet, as envisioned out of this model code. Next slide, please. So now, some more food for thought, and that's what the earlier part was, but this part is too. So we're going to look at some principles and some inspirations. And I think we're going to have Tommy Lee show us some of the, some of the new tool that she's been working on, so that's all part of this as well. So next slide, please. So we took from the planning principles, from the model code, the city's existing comprehensive plan, the transportation and mobility element that you just adopted this past month, and also looked at what that was planned for VOPH, because they're all just good, sound planning principles. So here they are. So you want to have a logical extension of your urban development. So, you know, what makes sense without having to strip out your commercial corridors and grow too fast before you're really able to serve them, not only with water, but with police service, fire, parks, library, all those sorts of things. You want to have an integration of mix of uses so that the uses can work together. You're not, you're never really too far from the things that you need on a more frequent places. So kind of a city or a village of short distances, reducing the vehicle miles, because the more we're driving, the more we're clogging up the roads. And that's just, that's a fact. Efficient infrastructure investments, back to, you know, public expenditures, roads, water, sewer services, emergency services. So we want to make sure that it makes good economic sense for the development that you're proposing that's going to be able to be supported by public infrastructure. And then preservation of existing rural enclaves, those places that may, maybe are not susceptible to change, they're rural homesteads, there's rural development patterns. And as we know, everyone loves the hills, the views of the hills. So how do we preserve some of those scenic view sheds? Protection of your ecosystem services, you know, building outside the flood plain, protecting your flood plain, same with your wetlands, and ensuring that you have impervious, or pervious surfaces that you can replenish your groundwater. And then efficient use of limited resources, water, energy, land. You know, they're not really making any more land anymore. And as Todd said, you're kind of up here at the top of what available land that you have left without, of course, annexations, that's always, but there's also a limited amount of land around you. You've got the green swamp area, you've got a lot of existing development to the west. So land is a limited resource. Next, please. Again, back to the street grids. They have greater capacity, they're more efficient and easier to signalize for traffic movements. They enhance your driver choice, your flexibility in which way you're going to go. You can avoid the crash location and move around in a different way. They're human scale, they're easy for people to walk and bike. They create shorter distances, so you don't have to go long distances. You can, you kind of weave your way through to where you need to go. And you live this every day with your downtown, you know, your CRA area. Network resilience, so redundancy, you know, having other ways to get around. And then sustainability and overall, just good quality of life livability. Next slide, please. This is showing the walk shed example in an area that you're familiar with, your downtown, and it just shows that quarter-mile, half-mile walk shed, so where people could get to conceivably without having to drive a car everywhere. And the next slide. This actually shows the villages of Pasadena Hills and how they allocated their walk sheds, their nodes. So there, doesn't mean that they have to be far apart. You can actually have little villages that are a little closer together. So just, that's just food for thought as well. Next slide, please. This is just a view of that density gradient, having a little bit more intensity in your village core, and then spreading out as you get to the neighborhood edge, and then stopping at your rural countryside.
Tammy, can I question?
Certainly.
On the, the last slide you showed, they showed the core. So what they're talking about is having a denser concentration of development in that core area?
So these are actually villages.
Right.
So there's probably residential that's envisioned maybe outside that, in the pink line too, but a little bit more dense within the pink. Maybe it's more of your typical, you know, single-family development outside that area. But in the middle, there's the place that you could walk to the corner store, or to a park, or to a school, so.
Neighborhood commercial, basically?
Yeah, mhm. So.
And in that area, there may be more intense residential too, right?
Yes. Higher density development, maybe a little taller development. And then conceivably, if you had a nice greenway system, trail system, people who live in one village could make their way to the other villages for what they have to offer. Next slide, please. Okay, we did this one. So the view from the road and the buffering between uses of more intensity through the use of vegetation. So wider buffers that have trees, sometimes berms, but those things that you kind of protect that rural look and feel along your perhaps US 301 corridor. And then if there are any more intensive uses, you know, at the top of Terabella, I believe across the street is some large, like a state residential type homes, or larger home sites, I think, that are right across the street. But just to be thinking about, when you look at your map tonight, you're going to have your focus area, but you're going to have the areas around it, just to always take into consideration that context. And then these are some techniques that you can soften those edges, you know, just kind of create an overall more beautiful environment and natural environment. Next slide, please. So this is just a, you know, Todd and I, sometimes we go to economic, P E D C things and we, we park here, you know, we go to the restaurants at this North Point Village. And so it's a great little example of, here you've got a mixed use that's like a Main Street. And they also have hotels. So because there was a hotel, or two hotels that were proposed in this area, we thought we'd go ahead and show an example. So next slide.
And it's right next to the, that's important.
It is. That is an important distinction. We'll see, we're going to, oh, that's okay. That is an important distinction, as far as market, right? Next slide, please. So this is just the pictures, you come in off of State Road 54 from this direction and you turn in, here's the Main Street, and here's the Hilton Garden Inn, and then there's a residence inn just a little bit further down. Next slide, please. So this is an overhead, you'll see the Suncoast Parkway to the right, there's the Main Street, which is called Point Village Drive, and then the two hotels. And then further down the way, you've got multifamily, you have office buildings, and then the manufacturing, Metler Toledo is in that area. So it's truly, you know, it's not all compact, but this area is compact, the manufacturing offices are a little further down the street. Next slide, please. And this is just another overhead view. So you can see where that manufacturing, Metler Toledo is to the bottom, and you've got your multifamily and your office, multifamily in blue and the office in pink. And then your Main Street up above. Next slide. They have design standards. So if you want a certain look for your Main Street, that's something that you could, you could think about. Next slide. And then this is work from a planner called Joe Minicozy out of Asheville, North Carolina. And he's been working with the Congress for New Urbanism for a lot of years. And I happened to see a video that he's doing Walton County's 2040 comprehensive plan. But he looks at in land uses in terms of their yield, not from an overall site. So if you look at an overall Walmart site, you might get a certain valuation, but actually measuring them acre per acre. So what is the value based on an acre? And you can see that the mixed use at the top has the 10.7, and this is in Walton County, $10.7 million per acre for the one, and here's 20.7 million per acre. It's a little, it's lower for your commercial centers, 1.5 million acres for the commercial center down here. And your residential, 1.1 million valuation per acre, single-family, 1.9 for multifamily, 5.7 for townhomes. But look at the Walmart, it's less than all of them, 0.5 million per acre as far as taxable value to a community, to the Walmart. So just food for thought. Next slide. Okay. So that was a lot. And we're going to go to the tables now, the planning commission and the city council. We're going to have some tabletop maps for you, some tools, and there's going to be a facilitator to help you, so if you have questions along the way. We have some instruction sheets that kind of tell you the steps. And on the back, importantly, there's some discussion prompts. So what kind of type, scale of development are most appropriate? Can we preserve the unique character of rural areas while accommodating growth? Where should the key transportation routes and connections be located? What strategies can we use to protect critical environmental resources? And? can we use to protect critical environmental resources? And how might this area contribute to the broader vision for the area, for the, for the region? Did you have something you wanted to say? Oh, I forgot about Tommy Lee.
Just a, a real brief, we, we got Tommy Lee in the background at our office. We're going to share the screen. But as you know, we're excited about this new software, Esri project, process that we're able to visually show different activities. In this instance, we're going to show you some hotels where we're kind of new into this, and it's, we're, we're going to get better at it. But Tommy Lee's been working. We got some JPEG images from the applicant where we wanted to show you some examples of the hotels. So right now, Tommy Lee's bringing up the... Tommy Lee, did you want to chime in? Are you able to?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. So here we can first see the existing characters of the area right now. So this is the top of the hill. Where my cursor is, is the purpose property. So that's the very top of the hill. Here is that subject property for the hotel site. And then back here, we have townhomes that were approved, but they haven't begun construction just yet. The hotel site, their engineer indicated to us that the site would be graded and filled to be level with 301, well, say 155 feet in elevation. So I went ahead and modeled that out here. You can see the proposed change, and this is just for illustrative purposes.
Hey, Tommy Lee. We're having a, we're having a little difficulty. It's a little muffled, and it's hard for folks to understand. But, so let me jump in here and then talk about this just a little bit, and then you can continue going forward and see how it goes. But, so there, there's the subject site you can see of the eight and a half acres that we've looked at before. You can show, see how the, the grade is showed off, where it drops in grade and elevation to the, the east. I'll also point out, you can see Terabella in the bottom center portion of the screen. And if you go across just north of the eight and a half acres, you can see, well, it's included with that, you can see where the street would go back on the northern prop, property boundary line there to where the townhomes would be. And you can see some of the existing tree canopy that, that's existing there. If you've been by to see it, that could probably remain. All right, Tommy Lee, go ahead.
Okay, is this better, can you hear me better?
It's a little difficult. I'm not sure why we're having a little difficulty, but keep going, Tommy Lee. We'll, we'll, I'll try to improvise and communicate as you move forward with what you have. She has to be back there at her screen to be able to do this. Well, here, here what we're showing is some of the imagery we got from Harvard Jolly, obviously showing two hotels that have been proposed. And what you see in the back is, of course, the, the townhomes in the back.
Aerial image of the Mobile Home Park across the street and 301 and the, you know, and the, the elevation change of the road to the top of the hill there. I mean, that's pretty accurate, right?
And that is correct. And just to clarify a few things that there was some confusion on, that the petition showed for 60 feet, but, you know, we, we had conflicting information, and they are right now at 48 feet is what they were proposing, at four stories. The other thing they confirmed when we talked with Cody Brightwell, the civil engineer, as proposed, again, this is all for illustrative purposes, hasn't been final design engineered, but what they were thinking is, is that the grade of the hotels would be equal to that of 301. So with that concept, of course, there'd be some cutting, and then, as you saw earlier, some fill on the back end.
They're cutting. They're leveling the hill.
Cutting off some of the hill. Again, that, that could be done in a lot of different ways. But the, what, the imagery that we got, it, it showed approximately eight to 10 foot of cut along the front with, as you can see what Tommy Lee has up now, it'd be similar in grade to the 301, but then, you know, cutting off the top, eight to 10 feet, and filling along the rear of the east side of the hotel property.
So you're going to level the front of the property to be level with 301 and take that dirt and put it in the back?
That's what they proposed now. Are, are there some opportunities to, to work with that, where you could have some varying? I, I think that's possible. Again, none of this has been design engineered. This is what we've been able to obtain from the applicant. And certainly, if, if it were to move forward, I think there's some opportunities for some grading shifts.
That's being done so that the hotels are a little lower profile, I guess?
Yeah, a little lower profile. And again, with a larger development site like this, and the, the topography, you remember the topography grade? Ms. Phyllis is here. She knows that her house there, you can see, I think on the upper right-hand corner, that's kind of the top of the hill. And then it, the southern boundary is within a probably five feet of the top of the hill, but then it gradually goes down and drops off pretty dramatically going to the, to the east. So that's one of the, the issues with the hotels on a property of this location with that amount of topography and grade changes. Go, go ahead, Tommy Lee, if any additional images you'd like to show us. We have a little bit more.
We just have the trees.
Yeah, here you can see the trees. There's a pretty nice tree canopy that probably is along 75%. The, the far north top of the, the hill, closer to Phyllis's property, you lose the trees, but probably 75%. This is what you have. And there's probably a good opportunity. We try our best to make sure that tree canopy remained.
That's all I have.
Okay. The, the other thing, again, we're kind of new into this. Thank you, Tommy Lee, if you're still on. We, we looked at, I had Tommy Lee do it at the current location, and we had it done at the bottom of the hill, if it was to be in, an alternate location where it wasn't at the top of the hill with that significant amount of, of grading and change in the topography. So looks like we don't have it up there, but we are looking at some, we were looking at two different alternative locations for the hotels to be. Here. I, I should have said this earlier. We, we want the Planning Commission to participate in the meeting, and I can bring the microphone over.
This is, this is the site here.
Yes.
And you said they were contemplating or possibly thinking about the bottom of the hill? Are you talking of the bottom of the hill here?
No, a good question. The question, of course, the hotels at the top of the hill, he was asking if we went to the east. That, that's where, where ranch townhomes are planned. We looked at the proposed location, and we looked at the bottom of the hill, kind of bottom of the valley where there isn't the topography and the grades that we have at the top of the hill. Just for analysis.
Yeah.
So, I mean, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but, okay, so where those trees are that are on the highway, like, that's the beginning of the city limit is that piece where the hotels are planned to be. And next to it is that, that motel that used to be the Happy Hill Motel. It's a Happy Hill Motel that used to be, you know, now it's something different. That, my understanding, is where the road would go so that you have access to not only the hotels, but also to get back to those, those townhomes, so that on the map, you can see that triangle, the rectangle, and then the path, and it's brown between the two yellows. They don't want to go through there, because you'd have to dig in the hill like you would have to do Walmart. And so they don't want to do that. So what they're doing is going to the lowest point. And my house is that one next to the square. I'm the next one over from the square, next to that brown entrance there. And so I'm the highest point. And so it goes down. And so they're really, their entrance, I believe, is going to be on that road along that Happy Hill Motel, which is the new place. I can't think of the name of it. But, and it would go backwards. And eventually, what am my understanding is, that Dairy's going to come through behind D R Horton and connect to that too, to give it a back entrance as well. But they're really not going in the top of the hill, specifically. Dairy Road is supposed to come back behind D R Horton at some point in time. It's going to transition that way. So that would be another connection to keep traffic off of
Okay, Tammy. Thank you, Tommy Lee.
So our... So our thought was that we would have Planning Commission and the City Council members just to count off, and then we would have you go to one of the three tables. So if you want to start over here with...
Two?
Three. That's, okay, that's what we, so let's do table one, table two, and table three. And then there'll be a facilitator at each table, and we'll get you started. So, thank you.
One's over there.
Probably all.
I did first, I did first. I didn't, I didn't. I didn't even scratch. But I...
So if you, uh...
Um, they're giving us advice. Okay, really good.
Okay. Don't forget, in the next slide, we all learned that...
So, again, what we got, guys, is Simon. We're gonna talk to y'all, you know, the first session. I'm feeling a little bit, uh, we should talk about, please, here's some information. This places. What we think especially when there's... That those are his time. You gotta... And then people discussion, how do we start? I mean, you have to act like that's happening, they can't be... So, you wanna see a marker? Now, marker or... Have, yes, I have. So, if you could show these. So, these are... So, if you could show all of them. Well, see, that's where it's coming up. Those kids. I'm pretty eluded. You say my... See my five double. Oh, yeah. All that sort of surprises. Yes. I know, the trail. So, it's, now, those, those, this, we also... This, those, sort of, we need, we need to see. Where that comes through, we don't ever see it.
I was here. This, this, this is... This is not, this is not, you know, so... There's one section, one, another. You know, those things. You're...
I see that's me too. So, maybe, maybe we just show you the house. The house, the house. Yeah, so, I'm... I'm... Anyway, you know, you understand, you know, the house. You know, it's, but, there, well, it's already not very, it's not, it's not... Continue to wire, really, so, I'm correct.
Well, I don't have dogs. I don't have dogs. All right. Yeah.
They were talking about, you know, it's, you know, it's... I was here.
There's all of them.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I mean, sir.
Another question.
I'm sure, yeah. And, and our, now, our, we, I, I was in, far, right? Fire, I'm talking here. Yes, see, you know, there's, all the way there, you're, you're, well, yeah. You know, the place. Yeah, I said, you're, you're, right? Those are the cause, that's what I'm getting at.
Right.
Oh, yeah. That's, so, maybe, maybe, I'll show you. I get you. Come now. Yeah.
Yeah.
Work. No. They made that move. All the way past, you know, this.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, it could be two stories here, it could be three stories, it could be four stories. Yeah. That's a room. You know, it's just that. So you're still here? I have no question. But the next chief's office.
Like you're doing the vision that's. I always.
And that's right, yeah. So what do you think? Well, the council strategically. No six lines here.
How they know?
Did you see the first one show? When we presented in the PowerPoint? You not see that?
So anyway, our presentation, our. So, um, we've got our transcripts that are local, uh, back, uh, either writing, whatever it is, uh, they're on a bus, drive or walk.
So, thank you Todd. So our gentlemen have drawn lines, as you can see on our map, that they actually want roads to take from, uh, Terabella all the way to Kosak Road on the backside. So if we do develop on the backside, that's going to go all the way through, the same as on the east side of the road. And I, I think that's Dairy Road, yes, and it's going to go all the way from Terabella all the way out to, um, Kosak as well. We also talked about putting a road from Phelps across and having that be an intersection itself of some sort to cross, uh, back over on that side. We talked about having frontage roads on both the east and the west side of 301 to take the traffic, uh, the heavy traffic off of, uh, Gall Boulevard. But it would also allow for that traffic to have no, uh, obstacles in its way if we were able to have frontage roads on there. They're looking at commercial in the front, residential in the back, kind of what is already exists there at the public shopping center. Uh, we also recognize that this is a floodplain here, talked about utilizing that, keeping it maximizing, uh, what's already there, the topography that's already there, using nature, creating a park there that would allow you to walk. From what we understand, this will never be sold, may or may not be, but to get around that, if we made that a park, we would be able to have, um, some sort of a biking path, some sort of a walking path to get around all of that and still be able to do commercial. Uh, one thing that we did want to make, I think I addressed each one of those things, connection intersection near Phelps crossing 301, same thing with Terabella connection, um, but we wanted to make sure that we understood that commercial means office, retail, restaurants, anything, basically anything other than residential. So there would be no residential along three, the 301 corridor, it would sit back off of the road and that would, would, uh, then allow for commercial or office space or whatever up front. And it would kind of go along with the hotels that are there because the rest of it, we've got homes back here, these are already taken and single family homes. So it would kind of keep the residential on the backside, the shopping on the front side. Is that it? Anything else, gentlemen? I think so. Station number two. Okay, so very interesting because a lot of our ideas are the same. Um, one of the things we talked about is good urban planning requires you to do some things, um, and, and I think I have a drawing, okay. So we talked about, if you look at what we have now, so we have single family all the way around the perimeter here. And that's kind of the ideal use because it's the lower density next to the, uh, agricultural areas. Then we talked about also the same thing happens from one end to the other. So low density goes to high density, goes back down to low density, then back up to high density, that that's kind of the ideal for, uh, best, the best practices for urban planning. So with knowing that all of this is single family, we also wanted to add some more roads in. So the silver roads, they based on here, so the, the silver roads is secondary roads, the gold roads are major. So we wanted to connect across here, we also want to connect, um, Phelps Road, and then of course, there's already a natural connector there. Then we acted, then we, then we talked about, um, you know, that we also want to create a park, we need a park on the, on the north side. And the li- the logical location is sort of nestled amongst the townhomes and single family homes. And so the idea would be that if in fact, we have the ALF here, they would have views of the, of the park. And we were ambitious, forty acres, you know, if we can, if we can get it. And so, so then we have townhomes here, the, uh, the ALF, and then we thought this whole idea of a village, um, kind of a self-contained village. So one of the things I talked about is every, every village has its own character. If we look at someplace like The Villages, The Villages has a long spines and along the spines are these nodes. And in the nodes, they have, uh, they have a community center where they have, um, concerts and they have shopping and they have recreation centers and people drive their carts from place to place to place. And each of those neighborhoods, they actually have their own kind of, they have their own dinner clubs and they have all kinds of stuff going on. So there's these little mini neighborhoods within this, you know, in this thirty thousand, uh, person city. So we thought something similar could happen in this space. So we start with the hotels here, then we have commercial, and Steve had a great idea, Councilman, uh, Spina, and that was that maybe it's a C4, maybe we don't have car washes and we don't have that sort of, you know, we, we buffer the industrial and really, we really try to make that more neighborhood-like. So yes, to the restaurants, yes, to housing, yes, to offices, yes, to low-density users, but not high-traffic generators because that's what we liked about the ALF is that it doesn't really, um, you know, it doesn't impact the traffic the way that these apartments do. Yeah. And we also had a multimodal, so that's the curvilinear green shape would be this multi-motor path where, where people can, um, you know, they can use their e-bikes or they can, you know, walk or they can bring their kids out on a stroller and it ties from one neighborhood to the other. So that was our idea, that's it.
No, everybody at this table is pre-Lego of people, so. The beauty of going, being number three is, uh, I just say ditto. Because we talked about all those exact same things, I like what you guys put at the last thing over there, basically anything but residential, that's exactly where we were at too. We talked about the, uh, the different roads. We talked about the, uh, the different roads, um, you know, same, same thing you guys were doing over there, really. Uh, mixed-use, office, office professional, a little bit office professional because the hospital being right down Dairy Road, they're probably running out of places where doctors can have offices and stuff, so we figured, give them some opportunities up here a little bit, which is still close by. Uh, we, we were really, uh, kinda adamant about limiting the amount of cuts in 301, but it was kinda difficult because, you know, you're gonna need something where the hotel goes, and then of course, you're, the Phelps Road, too, was the one that we were talking about. And, um, and then of course, the park, we, we have the same idea right in here with the park. So all, all of the, some of the same things that you guys had just gone through. And, and another thing, you guys drew them in more, but we were talking about the, the roads, too, like Dairy Road, um, and you guys were talking about a road here, and we even had green slope for a portion, but then you guys were talking about from Terabella on down, too, which I think is a great idea. So honestly, it's, it's just more of the same of what you guys came up with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Woo!
Yeah.
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 This is kind of, this is kind of gateway, the northern end, the gateway of.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a great opportunity for a big D sign and maybe, you know.
Mm-hmm.
And also.
And also.
We could do the archway together.
So, you know, through your buffering, your signage, you know, that stuff that comes later, but.
Right.
No, buffering is ruined.
The one of the.
The one of the.
Thank you, Rob.
I know they copied us, didn't they? I saw them over there quickly scribbling. You're right.
That and some other stuff.
Let me get in here.
I have someone else's computer.
So I think we've heard everybody's, everybody ready? Everybody's visioning story, and it was nice to hear a lot of overlap, so I think that there's probably an easier road to consensus than it could have been. So now, what we would like, maybe you want to talk about what that consensus is, or maybe, you know, we can write it all down afterward, but what, what should we do with that? Like, right now, how would you like staff to go forward to, to work on this? Who should we involve? What are some ideas that you have for taking this to the next step?
Well, I was going to say, because we sort of, I guess, made this workshop, because that is starting to happen now, is our, is our, kind of our issue, that area. And so, and I know the broader picture is the, the whole 301 corridor, really. So, in, in my opinion, I think we, you know, focus on what we're, because this, it's here, it's at our doorstep right now, so I mean, I think that's, but, but with the big picture in mind at the same time, of course.
If you, if you go back to what we all talked about, we always come back to that consensus, and that is this concept of having lower density than higher density, lower density and high density, and that could happen all along the corridor. That is just these little individual, you know, PUD innovative kind of design spots. But the biggest problem we have is that we have a woman who is in our midst today, whose family owns practically all the property. So when we talk about, all of this stuff is kind of, you know, pedantic. It's, it's all semantics.
Well, and that's why we put partners on the slide, because they're really a key, landowners are a key part of the parts, of the puzzle. And so maybe there's some compromise or wiggle, you know, just working together, maybe that's the next step for those other properties, is to talk about.
A group of developers together and say, okay, we're going to, we're going to let you do all of your retention down at one end of the, of this property, but we have to symbol all of this property.
Yeah.
But I've had discussions with the property owner that was here tonight, and the property owner wants to do the hotels, and shared a, a different multi-mixed-use type of development scenario where you'd have a couple partners, maybe the city being a partner with a park, and, and putting those properties together. So both properties owners have been provided information of the North Point Village as an example of some master planning that could be done, so I, I think that's been communicated to them, so yeah, hopefully something like that could come together.
Well, and I think what we discussed at our table, too, is this is our chance to put our vision on what's going to be there. We're not, and I've been saying this for a lot of years, actually, we shouldn't worry about making the developers money, that's, that's not, that should be our concern, whatever they're going to do, it's going to develop. If we, if we say, we kind of hold a line on this is what we want, and they say, oh, we're not going to do it because we can't make any money, they're not going to say they can't make any money, but that's your reasoning. It'll develop at some point, because this, you said earlier, we're not making any more land. Somebody will develop something there at some point, so why shouldn't it be what we envisioned for our city, what to look like?
I think that what we want to do is when someone's driving south from Date City, and they go over that last hill, they know they're in Zephyr Hills because it's different, and it's preserved in a way that you, you'd want to live there. And, and you see it all the ti, you see, you live in Penous County, you see it all the time. When you drive out of Clearwater to Safety Harbor, you know you're in a different place. And I think we need to leave our mark, and, and I think there's a lot of consensus tonight. And we can tweak things, you know, we want to, if we want a commercial, I don't think we can make it C2, because then we can get car washes and gas stations and more of the same. So maybe we do do a different zone.
You do need to have a tool specific for that.
That we can limit what goes in there.
You know, I haven't looked at your PUD standards in a while, just understand them, but a lot of times, that's the interim, so that you can use the PUD to.
So you're saying, make a separate zoning.
We add a new zone.
To keep out what we don't want, but allow what we do.
This is what we've, we've grown into, and this is what we need to put in here to preserve that area.
And, and we already have somewhat of a head start on that, because if we look to that model code, those areas are specifically addressed, and so maybe there's something, and, and I know things have changed in the years that that's all been put together, but maybe there's some kernels of things that, and certainly, you know, the, the area is the same as what we're looking at right now.
So when I hear the word PUD, and I, tell me, I'm, I'm the newest person to all this, I, I keep hearing, PUDs get to have 20 acres per land, they get to do more density, and that's not, we don't want more housing out there. So is that, am I hearing wrong?
Well, it, it allows you to do different things other than just that.
Okay.
You can be more creative.
I've only heard PUD as residential.
But you can use it as a more defining tool.
Do you need to look closely at what your PUD standards are? Every community does it differently.
But you're exactly right. We don't want to do PUD and go from 14 units to 20.
Twenty per acre.
In some places, they call it a planned development district, or a site plan control development, you know, so they have different ways of, sometimes PUD sounds a little residential, doesn't it, planned unit? But it just depends on what you're, how you're.
Yeah, I mean, the PUD essentially becomes your code. Establish specific standards for whatever you want to address, particularly for that development.
And I, I like what Ken says, that we need to do, we need to decide what we want, and then let the developers come with their, and not bend with what we want.
This is what we.
This is what we envision, this is what we want, this is what we've got. If it doesn't develop in five years, that's okay. It might take 10 years, that's okay. We're all right with that land being not developed, if that's the way.
Kinda, unless you're the self.
I, no, I understand that, but I'm saying, but if we have a strict guideline of this is what we're going to allow there, then we don't bend and say.
As long as it's not too onerous, you know.
Right.
I think if we do change the code a little bit, then we can be more susceptible to going with commercial and different things. I mean, to me, a commercial development versus a bunch of four, four-stories apartments, I mean, neither one of them is very attractive.
Right.
I mean, the apartments is even worse, because it's more traffic, it's more water, it's more impact.
And we kind of cited the new Publix development as a nice way to develop the property commercially. You know, when we looked at it, they did a great landscaping job, they had the internal frontage road in there, they had a great buffer from 301, so.
We had that because we adopted large retail design standards, initiated for the other side of the road that didn't go through.
Right.
So you see the differences because of what we did.
Right, and, and, yeah.
They've had a lot of criticism for the apartments, but they're working out. I mean, that was.
We like to be able to walk next door to Publix and get, you know.
They do.
I mean, people who are living there love that, you know, you like to walk across the street to get a sandwich.
Yeah, I heard that when I was running, I heard a lot of criticism about that, but it's working.
Well, and. The apartment's there, like Councilwoman Wilkes was saying, you walk out, go to Publix, you can walk across the street, get lunch, you can walk, you know, just past Publix and go to the liquor store, go get your haircut, everything's right there, so you come home, you don't necessarily have to, like where I live, I have to get in the car and drive to everything I want to go to. There, you can get out, and that's the purpose for that planned development, to try to bring the traffic in, and then it stops.
Because driving isn't very enjoyable anymore.
How many acres is that area, Todd? How many, how many acres is that area down there?
Nebella to.
No, no, I'm talking Publix area, how many acres about? Anybody have a clue? Because, see, these are all separate parcels that we're talking about.
Somebody will buy them all.
Yeah, somebody comes in.
Somebody's not going to buy five acres and they can't do anything.
Right, okay.
If the developers have a clear vision of what we want.
Right.
And they know that we're willing to work collaboratively with them, and there's something in it for them, like we talked about, you know, with the retention and the shared retention, so that they're not using that as, as built environment, that sort of thing, I think, does better for us than just, you know, digging our heels in and saying, we're not going to do that.
Right.
That we say, hey, these are the things we don't want, here's the character of the space we do want, and we want to see this repeated up and down 301, all the way from one end to the other. I think that that could help us.
Yeah, because just because it's commercial, we, we discussed, we don't want the strip mall with the green roof here, to the next one with the brown roof and that, and, you know, the same, like a Flintstones cartoon, you're going by the same things as you're driving down the road there. So I like Steve's idea of, of a separate, even a separate category for these district areas, or whatever you want to call for, so we can say, just like you said, this is what we don't want, for sure.
Makes it easier for, for Todd's people to do what we want done, if they know what we want.
I mean, why don't we lay out our vision in a, kind of a.
Code?
No.
A regulating plan?
Visual?
A visual.
Yeah, a visual, a total visual of what we, what we see.
Instead of them bringing us a plan, we can bring them a plan.
Yeah. This is what we see this looking like.
We did the layout for you.
Yeah.
An illustrative plan.
Yeah, I mean, obviously it'd be tweaked, but this is.
Yeah, but it's just a, it's a, you know, embodies what you put together, so it's not like you have to describe it every time, so.
You know how we talked about a section through the land, and so that we're preserving all those mature trees that are along, that are existing along the roadway, that it's okay to cut out a little bit of the land, so that you can recess the parking and everything, and we don't see floor, you know, floor four, but then when you get above the tree line, you see a little bit of the, of the hotels, or the apartment buildings, or whatever, the commercial buildings, and then we go back down again where, you know, where, where the lower-density residential is.
Yeah, the buffering is very important.
Good job, everyone.
Very good job.
Yeah, you guys.
You know, I was, well, I was a little skeptical about going to the table, but it was fun, it worked out.
So, so the other part of the meeting was, we were, wanted a consensus on the Warnerke property, kind of, so we have the visioning session and, and that, but the other part of the conversation is, what is the consensus of that eight acres?
Yeah, one or eight acres.
On, on the northern end of, of this vision area.
To me, it's kind of like height, how do we feel about the height? Because the height's part of the conditional use. How do you feel about cutting? You know, they, they're showing right now, again, illustrative, it hasn't been designed to have a, to have a, to have a, and I think it could be a little bit, I don't think it has necessarily, and then other places in the mountains where it's a plan, you can have a little care.
Yeah.
Well, and I think the other aspect of that, too, is the product that we're looking for. We're not, we don't want more of the same, we want something that's, and I know it's not going to be a five-store, five-star hotel there or anything, but we need something a little in that upper market, as opposed to just a, just a hotel. I think that's, you know, you talked about a, a restaurant in there, meeting space, or even little, you know, small convention-type areas, we could do bigger meetings or something. I think we need, I think that's a part of, should be a part of the consensus, in my opinion.
Right. And if, if, if we get that kind of guarantee, that those are the guarantees we get, then, you know, I'm okay with moving forward on it.
And what, but the, don't we aim site plan, architectural, a lot of controls when we do that, right? Don't cut the hill, I mean, if, if they just did a straight zoning, they could do whatever, and I don't know that, I don't know what the zoning is now, but if we can get as much control over that site, don't take the trees out, don't cut the hill down, I think that we're better off.
Right. Oh, no, go ahead.
I'm not happy to go, I'm not ready to go forward.
I think if we go with what Lance was saying, was we laid the parameters out of what, we can kind of steer them in that, we can kind of steer them in that direction, I think.
Which is a good idea.
But I think you're right, too. And we know all of it, and they, two hotels and the market turn, and, you know, we stuck with two hotels there, stuck with whatever we have, but, I mean, that's just a function of the economy, so, but I'm, I like what you're saying, that we plan, we're planning the whole, whole parcel, you know, and I think that's exercise we did.
I'd like to see, talked a little bit about this flyby, this idea that you're driving down 301, what do you really see? Don't take out the trees, don't take, you have to excavate a little bit, you know, we want to save the trees, but to get, you know, the, so the visual is right, so that this, because we know that the four-story hotels is necessary from an economic standpoint, they can't, they can't hardly sell it, but we can say, okay, if you do the four stories, they need to be 10-foot, you know, 10-foot between each floor, so that now we're at 45 max, and, and some portion of that has to be recessed a little bit, and then we want to see what that looks like as you drive down the road, and we want a real section through the road, so that we understand the relationship of the townhomes to the hotels, to the parking, et cetera. So it's really that whole space, and clarify the location of the entrance, and what does that look like, and is that the right place for the entrance? Because remember, one of the things they were talking about, they don't want to, they want to put it where it's cheap, not where it's the best location.
They said they already have approval from the DOT for that, for that pull-in and pull-out, is what they told us.
I don't know for sure if that's all on or off.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, we, we had conversations with them, talking about three-story instead of four-story hotels, you know, did we revisit that conversation? Does it have to be four-story?
We brought it up.
We did, we talked, I know, I was there, and they actually were open to that at one point, but then all of a sudden, it changed again, so.
Well, I think if we're going to request, like, a restaurant facility, a bar, a meeting room, then you're almost going to, you're going to have to go to four stories, I would think, I mean.
All right, that's fine.
Other options were the higher grade.
Right.
Yeah, we talked about that, too.
Kind of to your point, where you're, it's a different course, set back with the big block difference.
That's the way some of them are done in Orlando, they're, you know, that we, on the event.
The answer is that I'm not, for me, I'm not opposed to it, but it's going to have to work for, for all of us.
And I, I'm not opposed to it either, because of the fact that we're the largest city in Pasco County, and, and we need something like that, I mean, it's, it's, you know, with the tennis center and the Skydive City and other things we have, not to mention just the visitors, and, so, but I think, again, it, it has to be the right product, and it has to be done the right way, just like, you know, Steve and Lance and everybody was saying.
I'm not opposed either, but, I mean, I've never been big on four stories, but I think that we can work around that.
You have a hand up. Go ahead.
It's not. Yeah, and you can't take a 50-year-old tree and plant something and make it look like a 50, right, right, right. There is, yeah.
Well, I think, I think we'll want to make this, we'll want to make that stipulation, it's like you said, it's the song you played, that's exactly what you're alluding to, we're not just going to go in there and, here's two hotels and the rest of the land is a parking lot.
Right, absolutely.
And, and we're talking about the tree ordinance, I've been working with Todd, and about strengthening the replacement requirement, so that you don't do a palm tree for a live oak, or you don't do a six-inch.
A little tree like this.
And I think we also need to follow through to make sure that they do that, because I've seen some of these developments that we've approved, they have not fulfilled all their obligations.
Yeah, they give them a hard time. Or they die and.
Yeah. So did that help? I don't know that you have an answer for him, do you?
Well, I, I think the question is timing and how, when to move forward, but, okay, and can you share some of the comments that were brought up? I, I think there's more work they need to do, especially from what, what the, the entrance route on the north, the correct elevations, they're proposing the same grade as 301, and how it relates to townhomes, and better overall, I think, and, and then the architectural element, increase the buffering, leaving trees.
Area for the Greenway.
Tell you one other thing, I'd rather have two hotels there than apartment buildings.
Definitely.
We're all, we're all on board with that. I know, but we're, we're, we all feel that same way, apartment buildings, or, or, you know, townhomes, or, we've got, we're already surrounded that area.
Right beside his property, there's already a bunch, or right, was it right behind it? There's already a bunch of townhomes coming in.
Yeah. And you got the naked hotel right to the south of it.
Naked hotel?
No, no, they're closed.
They closed down?
No, they're closed.
They close at eight.
Oh!
I thought you said they close, they close at eight.
They got clothes on.
They have clothes on, yeah.
So, Todd, you got your consensus about the hotels themselves, Todd, Tammy, and all others got the consensus on kind of what we went over, which was a great exercise, as you said. Does anybody from the Planning Commission have anything else they want to add?
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you, guys, and we, believe me, I always say this all the time, but I really appreciate, and, what you guys do for the city, and, and take to heart what you guys talk about, too, and I'm glad you guys came out for this, and I, you know, like to have you involved in more of some of the things we do, so.
Tommy Lee, thank you for your.
Yeah, for your little.
Good job.
All right, I'm going to, meeting adjourned.
Thank God.